All right, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We can do a roll call.
Commissioner Meyer.
Present.
Commissioner Benson. Commissioner Freitas. Commissioner Kraft.
Here.
Commissioner Lazar.
Here.
Thank you.
We're gonna do a salute to the flag? Thank you. Um, we will... Do I have to not open a public... To comments to the public because this is a special meeting? Is that a little different?
I'm assuming because we're gonna open it later for the discussion about the topic. You can ask for it to be open just because that's the one thing we're talking about, but...
Yeah, we didn't put regular public comment on the agenda, just the...
Okay, good. Just wanted to check. So yeah, we'll just move on to new business, which is the Ocean View Acquisition and Operations Complex Development.
Kristin Kenyon, Director of Development Services, I'll be presenting with Katie Marsalon, who's a project manager with Public Works, responsible for this project. I'll just share our screen. We have a PowerPoint prepared. And then click on that. Share. And then... Slideshow. From the beginning. Cool. And then click to the next slide for me. The project location is off of Broadway, north of Wyler Road, and Sunset Drive in southern Eureka. Oh, you had to click on it again. And then do it. There you go. Here's zoomed in of the project boundaries. Um, the city is proposing to acquire approximately 5.6 acres of unused land from the Ocean View Cemetery to construct a Eureka Operations Complex, where the current corp yard will be relocated, and will also serve as administrative offices for Public Works and Emergency Operations Center. Um, so the commission's role in all of this is to review the draft initial study and mitigated negative declaration that has been prepared for the project, and review conformance of the acquisition and site development with the 2040 general plan. Both the property acquisition and the public building construction need to be reviewed for conformance. And once that's done, city council's role is to adopt the mitigated negative declaration, mitigation monitoring, mitigation monitoring and reporting plan in response to comments in Arata, and authorize the property acquisition. And that is currently scheduled for their November 7th regular city council meeting. Okay, I'm gonna hand it off to Katie now.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name's Katie Marsalon. I work with the Public Works Department. I'm gonna provide a couple slides and overview of the project. So, project components, this is a sketch or rendering of one of the site plans. And this site, which we mentioned, would serve as the city's new corporation yard with administrative offices and serve as this emergency operations center during a critical incident or an emergency or natural disaster. The project description that was in front of you with the initial study includes a full development footprint of 4.8 acres, which would include the three structures that you see here: operations building, a warehouse, a fleet maintenance shop, and then all of those surrounding amenities. And then this facility would house sixty-six staff members from both our existing corporation yard and city hall. So this would include our field operations staff, wastewater collections, water distribution, fleet maintenance, and street maintenance, along with administrative staff, including city administration, engineering, GIS, and code enforcement. Our existing corp yard is located at Fourteenth and Shore near Costco. The site has been in use since the 1950s. It's approximately 3.9 acres, so this just gives an overview. And as a comparison, Building A currently is our fleet maintenance facility, approximately 18,000 square feet. Building F would be the equivalent, say, at the new facility of a warehouse, so Building F is approximately 8,000 square feet, and that houses our water distribution and wastewater collection staff. And then Buildings C and D are more geared towards our street crew, street maintenance, supplies, and materials. The remainder of the amenities and auxiliary buildings here are covered storage, material storage. Some of the things that are lacking at this site are good circulation, the facilities are aging. We have another slide to help you see all of these good things. So, it has been in use since the 1950s. Our largest building there was built in the 1980s. That is our fleet maintenance facility. Most recent work that has been done at our site was in 2010 following earthquake work, and again, that was our warehouse, wastewater collections, and water distribution site. Our known hazards for this location are that it's in the tsunami hazard zone, the area is subject to liquefaction. None of the existing buildings meet current structural standards. There are imminent impacts of sea level rise. And also because the site has been added on to over the years, kind of a collection of buildings, there was never a really comprehensive site plan, so we do have duplicative spaces. We have inadequate space for some employees, and we have a lot of dead space in the site that we're not using because it's just, it's been cobbled together over the years. And then not enough covered storage for some of our larger and more expensive pieces of equipment. So this is the proposed site plan. Through the work that was done to bring the initial study forward, there was also a concept planning phase to look at how, if and when, the city were able to purchase this parcel from Ocean View Cemetery, how would the site be used, and how would it be highest and best used to become this operations center, operations complex. So this is a site plan that again is included with the documents. Building A would be an operations building. Building B would be a warehouse facility, and Building C would be the fleet maintenance shop. The other components that are labeled on here, I'm not gonna name all of them, but just to demonstrate where we would have parking and circulation, some of our larger covered storage, we have bulk materials on the site, we have a lot of smaller tools and materials. We also have a decant facility, which allows us to have soils, and some of our equipment that does carry soils to be able to de-water those and decommission those out of the equipment. That's a little site overview. Some of the kind of more detailed features, this is a laundry list here, parking, covered vehicle storage, the decant facility and dewatering that I mentioned, a vehicle wash station, all of our waste and recycling storage, a backup generator, also telecommunications, and then obviously the site lighting, fencing, gates, stormwater, and landscaping. So the site design process looked at visitor parking, employee parking, fleet parking. How would we incorporate at the site on a concept level solar panels, high efficiency building design, electric vehicle charging, and then also with the mindset for capacity to expand electric vehicle charging in the future? How would we at this site connect utilities, water sewer, gas, electric, and telecommunications? How would we lay out the site to keep it secure and lit, but not then have lighting that would intrude onto our neighboring properties? And then also how we would conceptually, the site's kind of general topography and stormwater treatment and landscaping around the parcels. One other feature that I like to point out is that this site does, in its current proposal, allow for the circulation of larger vehicles. Because we would use this vehicle, or excuse me, use the facility during some of our more demanding emergency seasons, or an incident, or any type of kind of command center or headquarters need, we would need to be able to get large equipment in and out. We need to make sure that we can house that equipment and serve that equipment, and so a circulation study was done for some of our larger pieces. The city of Eureka currently, which folks may or may not know, our fleet maintenance shop provides service for all of our city vehicles and equipment, our Eureka Police vehicles, and also Humboldt Bay Fire Vehicles. So, when you look at all of those, there's quite a large footprint that they need when driving through or pulling in or out of a space. In addition, when they are being maintained, a lot of those pieces come off. There's a big lay down area for maintenance of the larger pieces. So, in summary, the initial study mitigated negative declaration process involved a series of technical studies and analysis. Those are all presented in the document. But I think the other point that I wanted to highlight is that we demonstrated what the largest buildout of this site would be. So, it captures a proposed development of 4.8 acres. However, it is likely that through iterative design process and looking at funding, the potential buildings or structures might be modified, or they might be smaller, or it might be proposed in phases or sequences to allow the city 20 years or 30 years down the line to have growth, so that we would strategically plan the spaces and use of the spaces for what we need now, and allow for someone in 20 or 30 years to say, add an additional amount of square feet onto a building. So those leaders in the future can make those tough decisions. But, the 4.8 acres, as it's called out, would be the largest footprint. Those are my points for my summary, and I think Kristin's gonna take it back, and then you guys can take over with questions.
Yeah, I just had one more slide, which is that, based on the findings in the staff report, staff recommends that you receive the report, consider the draft environmental document, and adopt a resolution. Finding the acquisition and subsequent development of the Eureka Operations Complex conforms with the 2040 general plan, and we have a suggested motion when you're ready.
Stop, share.
Thank you. We'll bring it to the commissioners for questions for the staff.
I'll start. I have a couple of curiosity practical questions and a couple of actual planning commission questions. What city administrative functions are planned to move here?
Sure, I think one of the slides, excuse me, one of the slides highlighted the number of employees that would be based at the site. And, in common knowledge, we know at our corporation yard, we have fleet, a crew, a maintenance crew, and so all of those staff, we call them field operations staff, and they have supervisors. What folks may or may not understand is that there's a connection between those staff members that are also working at city hall. So, currently at city hall, we have an engineering division, we have a GIS team, we have our different staff members that oversee public works functions, and then we have some code enforcement staff who have recently been relocated to the existing corporation yard, but those are all captured in that administrative group. And, I'm giving you more information than what you asked for, but there is a lot of work and crossover. For example, an engineering technician who's working with a project manager in the engineering side, they might be doing data collection or reviewing camera footage of a sewer collection system, and they need or would generally be communicating with those field staff that would be performing sewer collections operations work on a daily basis. So having all of those staff co-located at one facility would then provide more efficiency for those, say, sewer collections, or what the work might be.
All right, makes sense. From the staff report and also from a letter in response to a letter, there was some discussion about access from a gravel road, the maintenance of that. I'd like to hear a little bit more about how that's envisioned, and also curious why, with, you know, 60 staff members and just more, why it wouldn't be a gravel road, sorry, an asphalt road instead of a gravel road?
So the existing corporation yard employees do park around and adjacent to the site. And, we don't have employee parking per se, as we would at the new facility. And then in addition to that, many of our employees, they're there on their daily hours, and they come in and out and get their service trucks. We don't foresee having multiple, needing multiple points of entry for those daily ins and outs. So the Wyler Road access is a secondary access. I think that's the gravel road that you're referring to.
Okay, that makes...
So, the primary access point that's proposed is immediately off of Broadway onto Ocean View Cemetery Drive, and that would be our main front gate, and all traffic would come in and out of that main front gate. Then there would be employee parking on site, so that employee could come into the building or go get their service truck and go out and do their work.
Okay.
Wyler Road, because this would be emergency site, we do need to have multiple points of access. We don't want to have an emergency where all of a sudden the main gate or the access road prohibits us from getting in and out. So this initial study document does point out two access points. Wyler Road would be one of those.
Okay. I probably missed that, and I
That's okay.
Appreciate it, that makes...
And we would, we would expect residents in that area would have concerns, so we were happy to look through those comments.
But I did understand that the city will take over maintenance of that gravel road?
So we, so there's two points for me too, is that the, it does not help us to have our expensive, heavy equipment moving up and down a gravel road. So I think that was part of the comments, was why would a residential person or someone with property want big equipment or trucks coming in and out? We don't want that either. It doesn't, it's not great. It would be wear and tear on our big pieces of equipment in the event that we do need to use that roadway, which we will likely need to maintain it as that secondary access. We would, can maintain it at its existing or better. So gravel roads can get potholes, they can get worn down, stormwater, so we would be adding material, compacting that material, grading that material to keep it in good maintained condition.
Okay.
Sorry, I just wanted, while we're talking about that road, I just drove that road. I wouldn't define it as a gravel road. I mean, I think it was a paved road at some point, and I guess I'd be interested in seeing if that's... I'm not, I'm not a road expert, but it did seem like it had paving that's been severely degraded. Is that your understanding, or would you characterize that as gravel?
I'm not sure that we've done any investigation of the roadway. So, and when you're driving across it, it just presents as it's either deteriorated or gravel has been added. So I can't really say that we've done any studies of the roadway.
Okay, well, I would say, just for purposes of, you know, disclosing, expertise communication, I drove the road, and it seemed to me to be a paved road that's in very poor shape. And, and I also just want to say, I also spoke with the archaeologists who prepared the cultural resources before we get too far in the hearing, and just found out that he hadn't been in the mix since the report, but we have some recommendations that he wasn't aware of as far as the mitigation measures. So, that's, that's the extent of my expertise.
All right, and so my my two planning commission questions now, zoning. Kristin, could you talk to how the zoning of this fits with its intended use?
Sure, yeah. It's zoned public facilities already because it's a cemetery, so public facilities are principally permitted at the site.
It's so interesting to me. I expected that to be your answer, but it's so very different. A cemetery and a corporation yard, but, all right. Any additional information about letters from the public or responses since we got the staff report?
I haven't received any comments. I know our administrative assistant received three calls today asking about the meeting and how to attend, but I haven't received any other comments.
All right. Thank you both.
Okay. Oh, with regard to the telecommunications tower, or I guess, whatever you want to characterize that. There is an existing cell tower not very far away that was constructed in recent years. Is there a reason why co-location wasn't considered as an option for that?
I'm not certain if an existing cell tower, we would, we'd have to explore that more. I know that in some of our other facilities, we're actually the owner of where the structure's mounted. So we own the underlying property, we mount our equipment on it, we maintain that equipment, knowing that we would be using this in high incidents or needing radio communications of that, things of that nature. We'd have to explore if...
It's quite close, and I don't think there is a tower or communications at the existing corp yard, is there?
They have a different network of equipment there that is really substandard. We would not try to model what is there.
No, but I think on PG&E, there are towers immediately adjacent on the parcel in that neighborhood.
I don't, you know what, those are
Okay.
You have looked into this. I commend you. You're putting me on the spot and tricking me here. It's a good...
Just want to point that out because it did seem like there was an asset that could be used and might not require an investment of a new facility. I guess I'm getting the feeling, I mean, we're having a special meeting today, so it seems like there's an urgency to this, yet I don't understand why. And I'd like to know if that's true, or if I'm just, and, yeah, assuming.
When public agencies attempt to acquire property, we're just by nature not as agile as private developers with it because we have to go through, rightly so, a public process with CEQA and this general plan for conformance review, and we definitely had concerns. You know, we had, we've been looking for years for a site, and recently approached the cemetery and found out that they were willing to sell it to us, and then we wanted to move as quickly as possible so that some private developer doesn't snatch shit up from us knowing now that they're willing to sell. And, we were just not able to get the CEQA document on your previous agenda because of the 30-day public comment period, and when all the studies got done with the, you know, rare plant surveys had to happen certain month, and so we've just been rushing since we heard from the cemetery that they were interested in selling to try to get to city council.
Okay, thanks. Was there consideration given to redeveloping the existing site? You mentioned that there's inefficiencies in the way that it's been developed historically, and I understand the sea level rise concerns, but has there been prior consideration given to that?
This, so, for me personally, I'm somewhat new to this project. I know that the city has other efforts where we've looked at other parcels and other property to try to relocate. And, considering that the county and the city both see this as, you know, not, not being able to respond during a critical incident and co-locating all of our equipment where it could be underwater or in a damaged area during a disaster, no, it has not been looked at for to stay in perpetuity at this site.
And, do we, can we get an answer on whether we feel like, it, oh, one, I guess I'll start with. Has AB 52 consultation formally been requested by Bear River, or has there just been informal discussions? It's been formally requested?
Do you want me to address that? Sure. So, the information that's highlighted in the initial study documents the consultation, and then when the study was put out for public comment, we had meetings with Bear River following that time. So our consultation process has resulted in some of the information you see that's in the response to comments, and then in those mitigation measures. So...
I guess it's a little hard to read because in the, in the environmental document, the same one with the responses to comments is the declaration that it's still ongoing. So do you consider it concluded at this time, or do you consider it still ongoing?
We did receive an email back that said there's, they would like to conclude that Melanie McCaver with their, I'm gonna mix up all my titles here.
The Tribal Historic Preservation Officer.
Thank you, yes. But that the result of our meetings and the summary and the information that has been provided here, she was in agreement that that was what we discussed, but...
Yeah, just to clarify, when we published the CEQA document, the consultation was ongoing, and it has since completed.
Thank you. I guess it seems to me there's some things in the mitigation measures with respect to the cultural resource concerns that are somewhat squishy and not well-defined. But I might wait to get into that until we've heard from the public, but I'd like to discuss that, I think, when we, once we're done with this part. So, I'll leave my questions at that for now. Well, I think that's more the deliberative, I have some ideas on that.
Okay, we will open up to public comment. Just a reminder, you have three minutes. You feel free to come up to the microphone and please state your name and city of residence.
Okay. My name is Phyllis Coy. I'm currently a resident of 6,400 Purdue Drive, which is a wellness center for senior citizens. My concern is, the people that currently reside in the cemeteries have had their peace and quiet for a number of years, and now you're gonna disturb it with, I don't realize if you know how, just how loud, heavy equipment and trucks and all that can be, but you're gonna disturb their peace and quiet that they've had. And, my parents are there, my brother's there, two grandfathers are there, and if anyone here has any history of this area at all, if they don't know Rudy Barcht, you're in big trouble, because he will be raising holy cane, and you'll hear him, believe me. Also, my husband's first wife's family is also buried in this, in this area, and I would, everyone would not like to see their peace disturbed either. I don't know if you've considered other spots. The, one of the spots that it's possible would be the old, where the old railroad yard used to be, that has, it's paved, it's no gravel road, it's empty. Then there's the Brockin Arby, which I realize is just outside the city limits, but that, there's freeway access there. There's a Kmart location, which we understand, we were told today it was empty, but we noticed there's cars there, so I don't know if that location is empty. There's stoplights there to help you on and off the freeway. The location you're headed for, there's no stoplight, and Eureka does not need any more stoplights. And if you're moving heavy equipment in and out, you're going to have to stop the traffic to get the traffic, the equipment in and out, especially if it's coming from the north. From within the south, it's just, it's just, it's simply a sharp turn. But coming from the north, you're gonna have to cross both lanes of the northbound traffic, and trying to get across there with no stoplight is gonna be a major issue. And, and I don't know when the last time the Fourteenth Street area was flooded. I think I heard something about 1950. So... That's my minute. Thank you. Oh, thirty. I think that's all I have, I have to say right now, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Phil.
My name's Eileen Barcht. I'm a Humboldt honey, been born and raised here. That's a green belt area that you are going to turn into concrete also. Has that been taken into account? I'm curious. And there would be noise for people visiting their loved ones at Ocean View Cemetery, of which I have relatives there. I'm Phyllis's sister. And the road Sunset that you would use to get to Wyler Road off Broadway is a very narrow road, and it is very, very hard for two passenger vehicles to pass on Sunset Avenue, much less a fire truck or the big cars and that, so that I'm looking at, you're probably gonna have to widen that road to accommodate two vehicles to pass, as, have you done any studies on that? Okay, and there was one other thing, but I have no memory. I think they'll do it, that, oh, what about using where Ebtide Mobile Home Park used to be? That's city property next door where the sewage treatment plan is, and that is off the flood plain, I believe. Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. I'm not seeing any hands raised on Zoom.
If anybody on Zoom wants to speak, if you could raise your hand or unmute. Yeah, I'm not seeing anybody. Last opportunity, unmute now if you're on Zoom and want to speak, and speak. Yeah, I don't think it...
Okay, I don't see anything either there. All right, well, I'll bring it back to commissioners for a motion and discussion. We'll try to address them in, during our discussion, yes.
Maybe, yeah, go ahead. I wasn't gonna share this, but based on...
I wasn't gonna share this, but based on public comment, I will say that I work for Pop and Barclay, which owns the Kmart building. We are in operation there, so it's, it's not surplus or available. And despite that, maybe a year ago, Director Gerving and I spoke about the possibility of the corporation yard going in alongside us at that location and it just wouldn't fit. So, that particular area, I'll both note that old communication, but also say, yeah, even though the business is in tough, you know, the industry's in tough shape, we're still going there.
And I would assume that with Lost Coast Brewery being there, one of the largest breweries in the United States, there is a lot of equipment already coming in and out, large trucks, large semis in and out of there, so I'm assuming that they are mitigating Broadway quite easily to get on and off from one oh one, so I think that you already have some very large vehicles going in and out of there daily, probably seven days a week, she's having pickups. So, I would think that the road is probably enough to handle the weight of those trucks.
I think I would just say to that, the first part of the road is very well-maintained because it was likely improved as part of that development. I didn't see it before that was completed. So, it doesn't affect the neighborhood because it's before they, they continue on to the series of houses there. It's really the condition of it beyond Lost Coast Brewery going back towards the cemetery. And then remembering that the other road, right, access is the one used by Pacific Motorsports and Apria and, and that access is a difficult maneuver and I'd like to hear a little more about that, I think, because we had comments from Caltrans saying they're gonna put in a light at Hilficker in the near term and that's going to reduce the amount of available queuing. And, and I, and I guess I'd like to know, that seems to be the primary access that's expected to be used. So, do we really feel like from a circulation perspective that that's sufficient without a protected left to take large vehicles and trailers and things like that in?
And I might as well pile on because I was gonna ask too about the comment on whether a stoplight is envisioned to be added and whether widening the road is envisioned.
Is the chair hoping for staff to respond?
Um, I would think that they want some responses, yes.
So, what has helped me a little bit in knowing this project is that we've named sixty-six employees, right, that would come in and out of this facility. Not all sixty-six of those employees drive all day long in a truck. A number of those employees don't even carry a Class A license to drive a big piece of equipment. So, when we have people that are coming to the facility, many of them will park their pedestrian car, whatever car they drive to work, they'll park their car, they'll go into work and then at the end of the day they'll leave. And then for those staff members that do drive a service truck, some of those are a standard small pickup truck. They will do their work and come in and out of the facility. When we actually do a larger piece of work and we get the vector out, that is an assigned location, it moves out, it goes to that site during the day and it comes back at the end of the day. So, I, I just wanna caution the perception that we have big rigs moving in and out of the site fluidly throughout the day, every day. That's not what this site would be used for and Caltrans during our meetings and our conversations with them, that was a great conversation point. I think they were thinking this is like a construction headquarters. We don't do construction, we do service and maintenance. That's, we go out and check equipment each day. Our contractors do the big construction of our infrastructure for the city, right? And then our work at the Ocean View Cemetery, the city's working really closely with the cemetery to look at that roadway access, to have an easement that shows that that's our first point of entry and having those conversations with Caltrans, it's what would we do if the queuing for the southbound and the left-hand turn, what would we do in those scenarios? So, we're looking at the length, what would be remaining with the Hilficker intersection coming online? And then also, would we have different policies and procedures for our employees to travel southbound, exit maybe at Herrick and continue, turn around and continue back on a northbound way so that they can safely cross over traffic, right? So, there's a lot of different variations that would be used and this is such an early stage for us, we would, can need to continue to have those conversations. That's why I think in your response to comments, it says continue work with Caltrans and continue that work.
Just, since I asked a question, I just wanted to follow up. Just say that I think it's the greatest vulnerability of this proposal and I just think it's bears pointing that out. It's uncomfortable, but it's the fact that I see. And, you know, going to Herrick and then turning around, that's a really unusual thing to ask. I mean, I'm not saying there aren't ways to try to address and mitigate, but that, that speaks to the kinda issue. And I think in the comments from Caltrans, they said, it's probably gonna require you to use that access that people are concerned about, the traffic and the damage on the, it was Sunset combined with the, the other one. So, I think it's, it'd be, we should be thinking about this as a project that will require use of both points of ingress and egress. It's not gonna be an either or because that's just the way it is. But I don't need, we don't need to belabor that. And I, I'll just say the other concern I have in terms of making a recommendation to the council is that it seems like the project's not stable. That, that there's still things being worked out and when you, it doesn't have to be totally a hundred percent and we've had projects that we've adopted MNDs like the Beta Zoo Trail, but there can't be like fundamental issues and I'm not saying there are, but I think that's the thing I'm turning over in my head. Are there, is there instability to the point where the project could look entirely different? I think we heard from staff that there's a hundred, you know, here's our pie in the sky, everything we want and then we're probably gonna have to do it in phases. But as far as, is there a fundamental change that could occur after we take action or the city council takes action on the MND?
To clarify, you're saying that, that ingress and egress is a major concern for you. So, that's what I was kinda saying about the Sunset is that there's major rays pulling across Broadway out of Lost Coast. Not that that's, but you know what I'm saying, that's, that same level of traffic and probably a similar.
And it's weird because it's, that's a better place to make a left turn because you're getting out of the densest part of the corridor, but it's the most sensitive in terms of impacts to the private road system they're gonna use. So, it's like it's good for one reason, it's bad for the other. The neighbors are gonna have their road getting a lot more, you know, impact.
Can I, Chair, can I respond to that?
Yeah.
You're right, it is early in the process, but SEQA requires us to, we're required to do SEQA, you know, as early as possible and we're supposed to do it for the project as a whole. We're not supposed to piecemeal and just look at the acquisition when we know why we are acquiring this site, for what purpose. And if the situation changes and monitoring of the traffic situation results in a different primary access, that would result in reopening of the SEQA. Because it would, you know, if there's gonna be different impacts that aren't anticipated in this document, we'll be coming back to revise the document.
Is that road, is the Ocean View Cemetery Road a public, a city-owned, like a public road or it's private?
It's privately owned by the cemetery and so we are working with the cemetery to, to get a, an easement over it for ingress and egress and utilities, potentially.
And do you have plans then to modify it?
I cannot remember from the Caltrans conversation whether they felt like the driveway was adequate already or needed modification. Yeah, Caltrans had told us that the driveway is adequate as it is for the cemetery drive entrance.
And besides construction, that would obviously be noisy there, is that site going to be a noisy space?
So, some of the comments, or excuse me, some of the information that's provided throughout the document in terms of the arrangement of the buildings and how they're positioned on the site, and these were from early conversations with the cemetery, was that this has been a very peaceful park-like setting and so how could these, the facility be integrated in a way that would not visually disturb or also with noise or light disturb? So, the buildings are positioned closer to the street, the Ocean View Cemetery Drive access and then landscaping would be in front of that. All of the forward-facing or street-facing landscaping and buildings would be done in a very artistic way. That's what the document calls for. And that the back of house or the yard space would be screened and would not be visible from Ocean View Cemetery Drive. So, currently at our corporation yard, we do have our crew members who stay on-site and work on vehicles and that's the noise that happens during the day. So, they have a truck that pulls in or out and they're inside the shop working on the vehicles. The other staff members during the day typically are not working or doing construction at this yard facility. Does that help answer?
I hear, I hear the reservations. I, I think with with the planning commission's role here with respect to SEQA and conformance with the city's general plan, I'm, I'm comfortable making the motion. I, we can continue to discuss, but I'll, I'll go ahead and ask for the motion to come back up. I, I don't love everything about this project, but I think it's, I think it's consistent with what we're called upon to review and, and decide.
Can I ask what SEQA is?
That stands for California Environmental Quality Act. So, it's basically the whole package of environmental stuff that jurisdictions have to do and that we have to review.
Raylene, it says the host disabled our screen sharing. Can you?
Well, that's weird, but you should be good to go again now.
Thanks, Raylene. There we go.
All right. I move the planning commission to adopt a resolution finding the acquisition of a portion of Ocean View Cemetery and development of the Eureka Operations Complex conform with the city's twenty forty general plan and directing staff to report the commission's determination and any comments to city council.
I'll second for the purposes of discussion, but I do have some additional thoughts, I guess. So, I, I think I'm closer than you might think to where you're at as far as it's public facilities, that, you know, it's planned and zoned for that. I'll admit that, you know, like you said, Commissioner Kraft, there's a huge difference between a cemetery and a courtyard. In fact, I would say from an environmental nuisance perspective, there couldn't be more diametrically opposed. So, that's, I think, the concerns we're hearing tonight from some of the folks, you know, that have spoke. And it's also some of the concerns that I have with regard to the number of people visiting the cemetery is not anything like the number of people visiting a daily courtyard with sixty-six employees. That's, that's a major change in the traffic. I don't know that it's enough. We have comments from Caltrans that say that they don't see the impacts as being significant, so that's compelling. I do live in this neighborhood. I mean, not super close, but I do go through this area and it's not a, you know, if I think of having to drive a larger vehicle or having to do it during peak hours, it would not be a fun exercise trying to make that left turn. So, I think that's not trivial, but it's not for me to say really. I think we have to look to the staff to work that out. So, I'm not gonna belabor the traffic stuff too much, other than to say, I think, in my opinion, we're gonna, both accesses are gonna need to be used and hopefully they'll do the right thing and pave the road and maintain the road for the private road that is served by other property owners. I don't know that we need to say anything to that effect. I think that'll have to just be worked out. Unless we want to include in our recommendation. If, if anyone else thinks that that's an appropriate thing to add or recommend to the council and considering the project and finalizing design, I think that, that's something I'd be interested to hear from.
I feel like it would be appropriate as well. You're gonna have equipment out there doing asphalt work anyway. It seems like kind of an easy way to mitigate that.
And as I was saying earlier, you know, it's, doesn't seem like it's a gravel road. I mean, as much as it might feel that way because it's degraded to the point where it's got puddles in it, it's, it was a paved road as far as I can tell at one point, so. Doesn't mean it's not gonna be cheap or it's gonna be cheap to fix. The other thing I wanted to mention is that in, in looking at some of the discussions about cultural resource mitigations, we have some of the standard things, inadvertent discovery protocol, but also a cultural monitor during the ground disturbance and, and there was sensitivity to the site, but they didn't find things during the cultural resource survey and that's what the archaeologists confirmed when I spoke with them today. I think some of the other things that are a little more esoteric are this concept of the allowing the tribes to use the property for gathering of native plants. For that to be practical, I think it needs to be in a more formalized fashion and I think the design has to account for that. So, when I look at the, the site plan, it seems to me like you don't want them getting into the entire, you know, you can't keep the whole thing open to the public twenty-four hours a day, so there's only certain parts of the site that lend themselves to being places where you would have landscaping that would be a benefit to the tribe. So, to me, that's a design element that in making a recommendation to the council on the environmental document, that it should be kind of firmed up a little bit, that, that, that there be a kind of defined area for, for the native plantings that will be for the tribe's benefit versus the areas of the thing. I mean, most of this site is gonna be, I imagine, paved parking at peak buildout. Yeah, would you like to say something?
So, the, in working with the cemetery, they, they also, you know, were wanting to make sure that the site was designed so that we don't disturb the cemetery, so there is gonna be a landscaped buffer in front of the site along the cemetery road and that will be outside of the gates. So, that's where we would anticipate planting the, the native plants so that they could be accessed without entering the paved area of the site.
So, the portions of the site closest to Broadway?
Correct.
I, I guess I should just share or kind of rewind a little bit that during the consultation process, there was brainstorming that came online, just a really nice, fluid conversation and we presented that there was a commitment from the city to provide this landscape buffer and then Bear River said that would be the perfect spot for us to, to make that a really beautiful and visible to the public, that these are all native plants, they have cultural significance and it's accessible. So, it wasn't us trying to craft that. I just wanna point that out.
Yeah, it's just not clear in the materials that we had before. So, I am only left to kind of start thinking through what you guys, you know, we didn't have a design that encapsulated all of that, so that's why I'm bringing it up at this juncture. I'm heartened to hear that, but that's the reason. So, you know, I, I think if, if, if my fellow commissioners are comfortable just saying that we've, you know, in our recommendation to adopt the MND are, are also recommending the council give consideration to the paving of the private access road serving the southern portion of the site and and that they work closely with the tribe to finalize the design to integrate native plantings that are publicly accessible into the, the final designs. I think that's the two fronts that I was focused on prior to the meeting.
I'd be happy to sign on to those.
So, to clarify, you're saying to pave its Wheeler Road? Is that what it is, Wheeler?
It looks like Sunset is already paved all the way to the intersection with Wheeler, as far as I can tell.
And then basically lay out where you, to buffer the, the landscaping to buffer the road adjacent to the cemetery?
That's one, another, that's another benefit is that the landscape will serve as, as a buffer. I, I think the key thing is that the landscaping area be publicly accessible and be, you know, given a chance to be finalized with the tribe's input, you know, on the plants and the, that kinda thing.
It did look like there was visitor parking towards the front and that would be outside of a gate, the gated area. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. By design, the frontage along Ocean View Cemetery Drive would provide a visitor access point as well as the landscape buffer. And then I just wanna be thoughtful that the existing kind of review of impacts doesn't demonstrate rebuilding or paving the road on Wyler or for what duration. So, if there is direction, it might help to have more, if it's direction to explore that or, or what, what length, it, I just, I'm not sure where this is headed.
Maybe I can make it really simple. I think it's the entirety of it to the project site. I, I, that's, I mean, that's what seems fitting. It will all be used by this project should it be developed. And not to pursue, but to include that as a component of the project.
Yeah, thank you for providing clarification because that is outside of city, city limits, so it would be improvements to existing private road that's in the county's jurisdiction. So, the private owners... So the private owners then would need, they would need to be more involved in the participation of that.
I imagine that you're going to need an easement i- if you don't already have one and maybe you do. And then as far as that type of activity, it's not often subject to much local review as someone who works for the county. So it, it, private road development, paving, isn't going to subject us to a new Sequa process or land use entitlements or anything like that. A grading permit perhaps, that's about it.
I mean, I think, yeah. You're going to need the secondary access. It sounds like that anyway, so it would make sense to pave that. So do you want to make an amendment to the motion?
Or to ask, yeah, the, the motion include that if, if, if Commissioner Kraft is agreeable?
I'm agreeable. I'm just crappy at upgrading motions, so I'll, I'll entertain a friendly amendment or two.
And I think you got the key things that are essential. We're making a recommendation to adopt the MND. We're making a recommend, we're making a, a determination that's consistent with the general plan. And I'm tacking on to that in a recommendation that the project include paving of the access road, that, that road being the, I keep forgetting the name. Where, what is it?
Wyler?
Wyler, Wyler, yeah, um, to the project site and, and that they work with the tribe on finalizing the, uh, plantings. And keep it a publicly open portion of the site.
Okay, so I'm good with amending my emotion to include those two items.
Attorney Black, is that acceptable?
I took your question to mean procedurally acceptable? Yes, yeah. I'm not a planner, so substance-wise.
Okay. Do you want them to reread that? We got, we're clear. Do you want, do you want her to read it back?
No, I'm good.
Okay, well, are you prepared to vote? Okay, um, how about a roll call vote?
Can you do that? Excuse me, Commissioner Lazar?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
And Commissioner Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. And Eileen and Phyllis, I hope we answered your questions, but if not, I'm sure. I can, we can take those after, at the end of the meeting. Or Kristen can answer your questions later too. Okay, um, it looks like no new business beyond that and we can move to adjournment. Thank you for being here.